And welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, July 6, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. And tonight, before we go into our regular session of council, we have a presentation from the Community Energy Savers programs. We have representatives here tonight from American Electric Power and Columbia Gas, John Buck from American Electric Power, and other representatives, I think, from our energy, our community energy program. Presenting tonight will be Jack Lavery and Mike LaScola. So if you'd like to come up and at the podium and...
Thank you.
Glad to hear you.
Thank you. Council representatives, Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity to speak with you this evening about a potential program that Columbia Gas of Ohio and AEP Ohio would like to partner with the city of Athens on. That program called Community Energy Savers. Let's get to the third page of your handout. It's a pilot partnership between communities and your local utilities, American Electric Power Ohio and Columbia Gas of Ohio. This program model brings the benefits of energy efficiency to residents, businesses, and the community. The goal of the program is to increase participation in the energy savings programs that both of our utilities offer to what we call our ratepayers, our customers in the city of Athens, and partner communities who participate in these programs are eligible for some awards if they hit some mutually established energy savings goals from a baseline, as well as the development of a sustainability plan. So what we'd like to do in terms of the agenda is Mike LaScola, who manages the Community Energy Savers program for American Electric Power Ohio, will lead you through some of the details, talk to you a little bit about the program that we, they did up in Amesville for Mayor Guzman's community, and wrap up with questions that you may have with us. So Mike, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your time this evening. I wanted to point out that we started this pilot last year, 2014. We ran through these communities, as you see, Amesville, Discovery District, Lima, Lewisville, Rio Grande, Somerset, and Upper Arlington. All of those communities started out just like this, with conversations with us, talking about how we could make this work in their communities. And it really is just what it says, a community program. AEP Ohio, along with Columbia Gas, will give a lot of support, a lot of technical support, advertising. We've got the programs. We'll conduct the baseline with all of the data that we'll need to establish goals and awards at the end. But we really do, the way, the way this really works, it's a partnership between the community. The way this has worked in other communities, we really have a strong group of folks representing the community, sometimes Chamber of Commerce representatives, people from the mayor's office, school system, libraries are always very helpful, and they come together as a team with all of us, you know, we'll have representatives from the utilities, and it's a way of marketing our programs to the community. The community rallies around something typically. So we'll have a project or multiple projects if the community here, if the county and the city, you know, get together and decide on what we want to do. But you actually gather around, rally around a project that the community members, the residents really get excited about. That's where it really works. So what we'll do is we'll establish a baseline, which will basically look at your three-year historical participation in our programs. We'll start there. We'll establish a monthly baseline, which would be what we would expect out of the community regarding participation in our programs without this community outreach. Then we'll double, or we'll double that, say, or potentially triple it, depending on a goal that you feel comfortable you can reach. The higher the goal, the more money potentially at the end of the day for the community. So after we do the baseline, together, we'll select the goal and we'll kick things off. We'll get, we'll get good things going with marketing and advertising and some local, find out what really works in the local community. If you have festivals, if you have fairs, if you have places where people are already gathering, that's a good way for us to promote the program. Then hopefully at the end of the month, at the end of the program, and that again is up to you, the timeline, we've had programs that were three-month programs, five-month programs, but again, the way the goal is established, it's a monthly. So if you go five months, it's five times that. So it's, it's harder to achieve, but you get more money at the end, again. So it's an interesting, it's an interesting dynamic between us. And then at the end of the program, hopefully, we'll be successful and you'll get your award. The award at the end of the program is the financial award. At 50% of goal, that's where you win the sustainability roadmap. Or there could be another choice, but the sustainability roadmap has really been successful and popular. We do the marketing, we do a lot of printing, we will have outreach people involved. You can see, you know, we'll have, we'll have a project manager, we'll have weekly calls and maybe bi-weekly calls after we get moving, keep everything on pace, keep things on track. So we'll be very involved. Here's some examples of some of the marketing. We'll have a website, we'll have an 800 number that residents can call to get involved, you know, we'll have these flyers, window stickers, you can, you know, you can put these where people congregate anyway. You can get churches involved, you can get local restaurants and places like that involved to post this information. Libraries, I said, have been excellent. This is just some of the examples, some of these that you can see that were used in Amesville, and we had a successful program in Amesville, and I think Gary would be willing to answer questions, let you know how things went there. So all of the communities that we've done so far have been winners, and we don't expect this to be any different, right? We have talked, we're talking to the county commissioners tomorrow too, so we're going to see where this goes. Six out of seven communities exceeded their previous whole-year program in like three or four or five months, in the month of our programs. So six of the seven communities developed a sustainability roadmap. The one that didn't already had one in place. So last year, when we did this in 2014, the 50% goal was the sustainability roadmap. There are some other awards that you could get. If you didn't want to go that route, you could do a, an audit on a municipal building or a city building or something like that, something of equal value. Just an example of what we did in Amesville, they did a four-month program, we established a baseline, they chose a goal of two times their baseline. Everything worked out as planned, achieved the goal, and I don't really know exactly all about the solar panel at the History Shelter, but that was what, that was the project that the community rallied around, and that's what was promoted. And they said, if we, if we hit this target, this is what it's going to do for the community. Again, we're here to talk to you about what we can do through Community Energy Savers with you, the city, with the county. There's a lot of flexibility built in, so when you get your team together, then, or it might be multiple teams, but when we get our team together, we'll decide on a timeline. So you can decide, you want to run this for three months, four months, five months, it's up to you. You know, the thing about that duration is you've got to, once you get the momentum going, you've got to be able to sustain that through the end of the program in order to hopefully meet your goal. Again, the goal selection is flexible, it's a financial award at the end to pay for a project, or projects. There's a Tier One Award, like I said, Sustainability Roadmap. The Tier Two Award is a financial incentive. Some of the benefits, the economic development benefits for the community, businesses and residences are going to reduce their energy consumption, they're going to have more disposable income to spend on their businesses, to spend on their home, spend. There will be local contractors involved getting some of the work. You're going to reduce the spend on your electric, on your gas and electric consumption. There's the awards we talked about. It's going to help you hopefully underscore your commitment to, you know, hopefully reaching your bigger prize, right, which is the Georgetown University Prize. Hopefully what we do here will lead to some success there. And we're going to get benefit out of it because we're going to get more participation in our programs, our existing programs. So what we have to do next really is, if we decide we're going forward and everyone here is excited about it, then we'll establish a team, we'll decide when we're going to kick it off, and we'll launch the program. We're talking about, you know, sometime down the road, based on when it works for the community. Now, I do have a couple slides in here that just talk, that's just me and Jack and John Buck, people involved. We've also got Karina, who's going to be helping with this as well. We'll have a customer services rep probably out of the Athens office that will help. We've got Shane from Columbia Gas, which, you know, we'll have a team of people representing the utilities, which will really help a lot. But I wanted to show you some of the programs. These are the programs, I think we may have already routed this, correct? Our programs from AEP Ohio and Columbia Gas that will be part of this. So really what we have is we've got these existing programs, these are the residential programs, and then we've got these business programs. We've got the existing programs, we're trying to work with you to help get your residents to take part, to participate in our existing programs, and if we meet the goal that we set together, at the end of the day, there will be, you know, some good options for the city and for the county, hopefully. So that's all we have presentation-wise. We didn't want to take up too much of your time tonight, but if you have any questions, this is high level because we haven't really hit the goal button yet. If you have any more specific questions, do you want to dig a little deeper? We can talk.
Councilmember, yes?
I have just one question about costs to consumers. This would cost them nothing unless they chose to enter into one of the options that, I know there's some fees associated with some of the...
Correct.
...energy assessments, or, you know, if they chose to obviously put in insulation or something like that.
Correct.
So can you describe a little bit about what are the potential costs?
Other than what you just mentioned, there are no costs to the, to the residents. Now, if we're talking about a business who does a project, then they'll get, a qualifying project will get financial incentives for us, like, to help pay for that project, but the business is still going to be putting some money up front for their project, a business customer. But on a residential side, the only cost would be if they get a $25 assessment or a $50 audit. Again, with both of those programs, the, the things that they get, the compact fluorescents and all of the goodies, if you will, that come with that project are way out, outweigh those costs. But there's no cost to the community, only time and effort of your people, because we really do need the local people to make it, to make it work. AEP Ohio and Columbia Gas can't send enough troops down here to really just run the project and do everything. We really need those, those partners at the, at the library and the church and schools and the chamber to really help get the message out to their members and their community.
If I may clarify one point that you alluded to was that if residents do opt to go forward with haddock and wall insulation, for instance, there are really great rebates available on those, some nearing 50%. The more you do, the higher the rebates are. So it really buys down the cost of doing those energy efficiency measures for residents who participate.
Councilmember Patterson.
Hi, my concern, you mentioned the Georgetown Prize, so Upgrade Athens County has done a lot of advertising, and I wanted to hear in your presentation that you were coordinating and are working with them.
Indeed, we are, and in fact, we've met with them today. We've been in the works with Sopek and the Upgrade Athens County folks for a while now.
Okay.
And there's lots of, lots of opportunities to do a variety of different programs in addition to what's going on through Empower.
Okay.
And these are, these are programs that have existed, some for nearly 30 years, some of them more recently, within the last 10 years.
Councilmember Patterson, did you have a question? Okay, Mayor, why?
One thing I'd ask you, if you're going to speak, go to the mic, of course, so the rest of, so you can get that word out, okay? The other question I have is, of course, we're 70-plus percent rental, is that considered residential or business? I guess it's the question I'd have.
Well, it would be considered residential, but we do have a multi-family option that if there's an owner, if there's an owner of the entire facility and wanted to audit every, every unit in the building, that's, that would be considered a multi-family commercial, a commercial program. But still, we would come in and we would have somebody audit and do the installation, the direct install, the compact fluorescents and, and the items individually, but there's no cost to those people, there's no cost to that landlord.
I'm curious as to why there's a cost, even though it's low, for the homeowner, but it's free assessment installation and multi-family?
I'm, I don't know why there's a, there's a cost of it that's not associated with that. I guess maybe because it is, we're dealing with one landlord, and the landlord is allowing us to come in and we get, you know, we get to do a lot of energy-saving options, we get to, you know, a lot of bang for the buck, if you will, maybe it's just more cost-effective to go that route. The homeowner, individual homeowner, it's a little bit of a different program as well because if you get the four-hour energy audit, either through Columbia Gas or AEP Ohio, you get a blower door test, you get a diagnostic, you get a nice report, which really gives you a lot of information about your house and where you can spend some money to save money additionally. I don't think that comes with the multi-family. I think we just go in and do the direct install of the, of the measures. It's a lower cost for us.
Other questions? Yes, Mayor, why?
So you're talking about setting a timeline and a goal. Approximately, what do we talk about? You said three to five months, I believe, and in terms of putting a team together, I guess the question I'm, the reason why I'm asking is, of course, you know, sometime at the end of August, we'll have an influx of 20,000 residents. And again, if you're speaking directly to the landlord, that's one thing. If you're trying to bring, you know, habits, or rather, you know, behavior things into the play, you're going to have to have an education program that's going to have to be pretty robust. So I guess when you say timeline, and we talked about two months from now kicking it off, four months from now kicking it off?
I would say that if we can make, I don't know if we can make August first, I don't know what we have, you know, we still got some work to do in the background, but I would say that, that the team that's made up of the folks here will have to decide what makes sense for them, because if you want to, if you want to couch it around the students coming back, that's, that sounds like a good place where you've got a lot of people coming together, you get the word out to a lot of people all at once. If you have, you know, in another community that I was involved with, Upper Arlington, they did it through the summer because they had an arts festival, they had a Fourth of July, and then they had a taste of Upper Arlington. They really wanted to encompass those natural gatherings of people in their community, and they felt like that was a great way for them to get the word out. So if you have those types of fairs and, what did we talk about, a pop-off festival or something? If you've got, if you've got things like that where you've got people coming together, you can really get the word out to a lot of people in short order. So that will be partially up to you. Karina, I don't know if you have a sense of when we could be ready?
August sounds, yeah.
Actually, I'm not sure the best time. When you talk about August, the students are coming in, they've got a lot of distractions. So they try hitting them when they, they walk through the door, they have, you know, they're dealing with classes, friends, you know, finance, and so I'm just, I guess I'm trying to figure out what would be the best time to pull the trigger on this.
It would be up to you.
Yeah, it will be up to the team. Truly, we have a lot of flexibility with regard to, because we want it to succeed. We want the project to succeed. We don't want to do it in December and January and February when people are hunkered down. We want to do it when we're able to see faces of people and talk to people and get the word out. So I would say that that would be a team, a team decision.
Okay.
We have one more question and then a comment from...
I was just curious, in the other cities you've worked with, who is it that you work with from the administration or from the city or council or whoever?
Usually there's somebody from the mayor's office that's typically been the, like, the go-to person, somebody, even if you have somebody doing co-op work and get them involved. But then there's, there's, there's been creative people from the library, and there's been, you know, business people from the chamber that gets, that will help get the word out to their, to their members, and, you know, communications people from the library, the schools, the mayor's office. It's just, you know, it's just finding the right people that really have the energy to make it go, because that's really what it takes, some cheerleading.
And we have a comment from Gary Guzman, who's mayor of Athens, Amesville. They both start with an A.
Yeah, they are Athens. What am I doing here?
Gary, could you come up to the podium and just introduce yourself so we have your name on record, and that will be a help.
I'm Gary Guzman, the mayor of the village of Amesville, and as you heard, we participated in the program a little over a year ago. One thing I would say about the audits is an opportunity to work with your business community. We got together with Airclaws, which is located in Amesville, an HVAC company, and they agreed to waive their fee for the residential, they were a certified auditor for residential sites. They agreed to waive their fee for anybody in Amesville for the residential audits. So that knocked that out and just made it that much easier for them to participate. They were not certified as a commercial or mercantile account, so we didn't have that accessibility, but we don't have that many businesses, so we really focused on residential.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from Council? Oh, County Commissioner Chris Schmeele, if you could introduce yourself as well when you get to the podium.
Yeah, hey, I'm Chris Schmeele, County Commissioner. I just, this is really awesome, what Columbia Gas and AEP has done here before. I mean, because they've never done this together, on this large of a community, and for them to step up and help us win the Georgetown University Energy Prize, I mean, this is a great opportunity. There's a lot of work to be done, and, you know, there's multiple levels of benefits, and I just wanted to applaud, you know, the utility companies for stepping up. And Mike was mentioning CFLs, but AEP's actually donated 48,000 LED bulbs to this project, right, Mike?
I, I don't, I didn't know the number, I didn't know the exact number, but Deanna, Deanna Gilliland, who runs our smart lighting program, I've seen a lot of the emails going back and forth about storing the light bulbs, the LEDs.
Twenty pallets of LED light bulbs are going to be delivered down to the industrial park on East State Street. Tom Parfit and Brent Hayes have, you know, graciously donated some, you know, dock space. So I think this is a great opportunity to get everybody to, you know, our Upgrade Athens team, we're all here to help. We're meeting all the time, and, you know, we're, we're reaching out, and we've got multiple things going on, and so we're, I think we've got a lot of people to, to bring to this, and, you know, people are wanting to do it, so.
What's the contact information for Upgrade?
The contact information? We have an energy advocate, and Tenney Bannock out there. Tenney, what's the phone number?
It's 740-541-4338.
And that's kind of like a hand holder that can help get people to see what their options are. And there's all these programs that the utility companies have, we've got some stuff that Empower has, and, you know, so we're just trying to get people to, you know, a lot of people in Athens care about energy and its impact on our world, and, you know, becoming energy efficient is one of the best ways to take responsibility for our energy choices.
Okay, thank you very much for the comments. And what will I, oh, yes, two more, two or three more comments here from, are there any other council members that have any other comments? Okay.
I just wondered how the citizens of Athens are able to access the, some of the pallets of the LED lighting.
It's going to be through this program.
So you get an energy audit, you get light bulbs to upgrade you.
In terms of, let's say, we went through an energy process probably about five years ago with Perfection Group, looking at our city infrastructure. So should that be added to the mix since you wouldn't want to reinvent the wheel for any of our particular city buildings, I imagine, no?
I don't think city buildings are...
Are relevant, are a part of the pick? Okay.
There are some caveats.
They're under ours.
Okay, there are some caveats to the number of accounts that are under the same name that can participate. So again, this is high level, talking to you about what the program's all about, there are, there are details to be, to be ironed out regarding where we get... Jack, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I was just going to say, to that point in particular, I mean, if there were projects that didn't happen as a result of that particular study that was done...
Their projects that didn't happen.
...it might be an opportunity for us to take a look at the engineering work that was done behind those and requalify those projects for rebates under our programs.
Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you for the comments. We have one more comment here from a council member, and then we're going to wrap up.
It was really a question, and it was based upon something the mayor just mentioned, and would it only be those who take place or go through the energy audit that will be getting these light bulbs, these 45,000 light bulbs?
I was going to say, I don't really know, I know that there was some conversation about how the light bulbs are going to be distributed equitably, and I didn't know the answer to that. Thank you.
And if you could introduce yourself at the podium, please.
I'm Sarah Conley-Baloo, and I'm the director of Upgrade Athens County. And the LED light bulbs, the coordination of that is going to take place with Upgrade Athens County collaborators. We do want to target rental units in specific. We also are interested in municipal buildings, but certainly with 48,000, we can get them out to a lot of people. So at this point, we are working on creating a program where we're using student ambassadors through Ohio University's Off-Campus Housing Program. When they come back to school, the student ambassadors will be trained to bring the LED bulbs out to residences and help renters understand how to use, put them in high-use areas and, and take advantage of energy savings opportunities. So that's one way, but then also looking at multi-family units and, and then certainly residences as well, because that certainly is where many of us need bulbs in specific. So, so it's all happening through Upgrade Athens County, and we'll, we'll be taking care of the swift distribution, so.
Okay. Thanks for answering our questions and for the comments tonight. And I think I sense a general, maybe, interest from council members. If I understand correctly, it's establishing a team, setting some goals and some timelines, and your interest is in having the city, as in a representative perhaps from the mayor's office or somebody from administration or council serving on the team, and...
That's certainly up to you all to decide, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
We'll be in contact.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our regular session of city council meetings tonight, where we'll have, establish a quorum, and then have the disposition of minutes and reading of some ordinances. And we do have a quorum here tonight with all but two council members present. And I would entertain a motion for the disposition of minutes, and we have several sessions of minutes. Those that were held on June, for regular session of council on June 15, 22, 24, and 26.
I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Communications, do we have any communications from city council members?
I have a couple communications.
Yes, Councilmember Reiser.
Those emails that were sent to me, that's the second ward representative. One is, it may seem kind of trivial, but I don't know, I think it's important. It's my next-door neighbor, two weeks ago, she said her trash out to be picked up, and it wasn't. And mine was, everybody else's was, but hers, hers wasn't. And she called and finally got a person at the solid waste facility and was told well it was her own fault because she didn't get it out by 7:00 a.m. Well, I didn't get mine out till 9:00, and the guys didn't come and pick it up till noon. It wasn't her fault. I mean, the guy's made a mistake on the truck, that's what happened. But I think she should be credited. I don't think she should have to pay double for their mistake.
You talk about a special haul, or you just...
No, I'm just talking about garbage on Wednesday, you know, trash cans.
If she puts out too many.
No, she had one.
No, no, I mean, to double it.
Okay, so as I understand, was it, was it picked up that night?
No, it was not.
Oh, okay.
I would encourage you, if you would like to, on her behalf, Jeff, just reach out to me and we can get with utility billing, or I can speak directly with a citizen myself, so.
Okay, I just want to bring that to you, Tenney.
All right, thank you.
I kind of figured this way would work.
Any other communications?
Well, one more. And this one, I got a lot of stuff on, and codes run, flash floods. I like to separate the, the thing out, this thing is Richland Avenue flooding. Richland Avenue does not flood. Richland Avenue is the recipient of the flood. It gets flooded like anything else, it gets inundated. And I know this isn't, there's really nothing we can really discuss here about it, other than the fact I like to acknowledge that I did receive communications, and I replied to everybody. I replied to everybody. It's nice to hear on television that we really are concerned about their, you know, their communications, but, um, I'd like to, next committee meeting next week, under, uh, development, planning and development, get a discussion going about possibly what we might be able to at least determine about Coats Run flash floods.
It should be greatly improved with the Richland Avenue project. The issue is while they're, we're under construction, the storm drains, you know, were bagged off to protect that.
I understand that, that's why I want to separate the, the issue of...
For the project.
Of the project. The project has nothing to do with a flash flood, okay? It doesn't make Coats Run overflow. It doesn't do that. It's the watershed and the water pouring into Coats Run that makes it overflow because there's a lack of, of volume. There's too much coming in, not enough time for it to exit. There's no place for the water to go except out of its banks, and because the bank is steep on one side and flat on the other, it pours out onto Richland. Richland is the victim of it, it's not the cause. So what we need to do, at least in my opinion, as, as a former hydrologist and, uh, scientist, that you first of all determine what is the problem. And then, once you know what the problem is, because we have all kinds of anecdotal opinions about what the problem is and what caused it, and how frequent these floods are. You know, you talk to people and they say, "Oh, they're more frequent than they ever were, much more so than they were 20 years ago." I don't know that. I mean, can you quantify, we have no, no quantifiable evidence to really base a potential solution on.
Interesting that you should say that. At staff meeting this morning, the city engineer discussed looking at possibly reseeding of some of the embankments as you head out, uh, 33.
Uh-huh. That potentially could be...
Potentially.
...a solution, but you don't know that, that would even begin to correct the problem.
Okay. So, I'll tell you what, right now, what I'd like to do is, this is a communication.
It is.
And so I think you've listed the agenda and the concern, and we will bring it up next week at Planning and Development Committee. Thank you for that communication.
Sounds good.
And we'll have a chance for gathering resources and information between now and then. Okay, are there any other communications from other council members? Commissioner, uh, council member Pappy?
I would just mention, many of us in this room have received, uh, commentary regarding panhandling, and, um, I'm hoping that that will be on services, um, agenda for next week. I'm not on that committee, so I can't speak to that, but I, we have received lots of communication regarding that issue, so.
We have. Um, I, there was a nice article done about the police chief's article in his lovely newsletter that basically states, "Please give to a charity, don't, don't ham." We've made it very appealing. Um, we'll have to work with the law director's office as we move forward to see what legislation, if any, is able to be put in place.
Okay, thank you. Any other communications? Um, I did receive one communication from a citizen concerned about our coverage or not coverage for residential customers for Time Warner Cable, and clerk of council Debbie Walker is helping us identify a residential manager that we can refer, um, citizens to, but I know that's been a complaint of people too over time. And communications now from other elected officials? Mayor Wile?
Um, just two things. I believe tomorrow...
Wednesday?
Wednesday, oh, sorry, the eighth. Um, there's going to be a meeting, a public meeting about the upgrade, Columbia Gas upgrade for Graham Drive, I believe it is, six o'clock. This is, they're going to be doing more than rises, I think, gas line pipes. So it behooves everybody from the Far, Vena and the Far East Side to check it out. But the other one, of course, is a Saturday coming up, is the household hazardous waste pickup. It goes, that's around between nine to, to one, I believe, it says. Should be a flyer of various, uh, information on the city website. It's at the community center. Uh, you know, with, bring your, you know, your solvents, your pesticides, et cetera, et cetera, batteries, uh, toxins. This is for residential, as the household hazards.
Electronics?
So, there you go. And that's all I have.
Electronics?
I believe they do have any waste in there. Yes, computers, CPUs, printers, scanners, monitors, and other components.
Yes. And council member Cochran, did you have a question?
Thank you. Uh, maybe I missed it, but did you mention the location for the meeting about the Columbia Gas project?
I think community center as well, I believe.
Okay.
Your neighborhood.
Right.
Six o'clock, Wednesday.
Okay. All right, and...
That's all.
Does the communication, law director Eliason? No? Okay, all right. We will move on to ordinances for third reading. We have two of them tonight. Ordinance 60-15, and ordinance amending the Athens City Code General Regulations to add Chapter 9.16 Municipal Separate Cemeteries, originally introduced by council member Fall. And do we have another member, council member Reisner?
Well, I can speak to it.
If you could speak to it, please.
To say that, uh, we've discussed this issue both in committee and it's had two readings. The administration has talked to us about it in length. I think, you know, the ducks are in a row and we're ready to go on it, so I would, uh, make a motion to adopt.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments from other persons? Yes, Mayor Wile?
Again, this, we put this together, we may have to modify it as time goes on, depending on how, you know, it works for, uh, newly acquired, soon to be acquired sometime.
Okay.
So, it's a, you know, it's new and different.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 60-15. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Okay, the motion is approved for the adoption of the ordinance. Ordinance 71-15 is an ordinance amending ordinance 66-15, the 2015 part-time and seasonal staffing levels and declaring an emergency, introduced by council member Reisner.
Um, again, this has had its first and second reading, it's been discussed in, um, committee, so I make a motion to adopt, uh, 71-15.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Not really.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Okay, the motion carries. We have now ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 62-15 is an ordinance granting the renewal of a revocable license to Bruce Brunton, owner 751 West Union Street, to allow the placement of a sign on the city Ordinance 64-15, an ordinance repealing ordinance 91-77, vacating the final plat of Valley Acres subdivision. Ordinance 67-15, an ordinance establishing a general fund administrative cost allocation policy. Ordinance 69-15 is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to submit an application to the local give government innovation program for a grant to fund a feasibility study for a joint facility to house Athens City, Athens County, and Ohio University Safety Services. We now have an ordinance for first reading, and this is 72-15. And this is an ordinance amending the 2015 appropriation ordinance, introduced by council member Reisner.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, this is a little lengthy because there's a lot of money coming and going, but, um, try to be brief. Thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars to the street fund to cover the recently adopted cost allocation policy. Sixteen hundred to the general fund, lands and buildings for roof improvements at the Mansfield House on East State Street, housing the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Eighteen thousand to the general fund, cemeteries for part-time staffing for maintenance. Four thousand two hundred to general fund, cemeteries to cover supplies, utilities, and professional services, and twelve thousand dollars to general fund, cemeteries for building improvements to the mausoleum. Three thousand dollars to the street fund is needed to cover a refund for a check that was deposited with the city when the payment should have went to the county. Oops. And twenty thousand one hundred sixty to the recreation fund, one thousand one hundred sixty-five to the water fund, thirteen thousand six hundred thirty-two to the basic internal fund, again, to cover the recently adopted cost allocation policy. Section two transfers two thousand three hundred in the general fund, fire for the supply line to the capital line to cover the costs of some needed furnishings, and transfers ten thousand ninety-three dollars in the community center capital line to the professional services line, and decreases the wastewater treatment plant by twenty-two thousand nine hundred twenty-three, and the garbage fund by twenty-one thousand seventy-seven, to finalize the funding for the recently adopted cost allocation policy.
Any other comments or discussion on this first reading?
Um, not that I can think of. Do we have to move any of this quickly?
I know that we're, we're just going to have to wait for, for the first reading for the roof improvements.
Yeah, okay. Well, the question is, this would be the first reading, second reading would be the second meeting, if we don't have one in August, we might need to suspend...
Suspend on the second reading?
On the second reading, if you have the, the numbers. If not, we'll have to...
If we have the numbers right.
If not, we'll have to put a special session together, something to think about. Either that would be the...
We were going to ask for, I believe, this evening.
For the...
For next, beginning next week.
So a special session next Monday, possibly? Okay.
Someone to champion, huh?
Okay.
I can call a special session. We're having a special session next Monday.
Thank you very, thank you very much for the information. Okay, we have a resolution for third reading, and this is Resolution 715, a resolution declaring it necessary to replace existing curb and sidewalks deemed in poor condition on Central Avenue, North Congress Street, and South May Avenue. This is project number 294 and declaring an emergency. Council member Pappy?
Thank you. I move to adopt.
Second.
This is a project we've been discussing for quite a few months now, and, uh, the assessment phase will begin, I assume, um, and, uh, we're looking to, this is in our, furthering our goals of improving our sidewalks and making our city, uh, more walkable and
Number Patterson?
I just want to add, you, you alluded to it, is that these repairs are going to be for some sidewalks that are in desperate need of repair, especially when it comes to accessibility. And so, uh, I'm glad to see this moving forward.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for the approval of Resolution 715. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Okay, the motion is approved. All right, this is the end of the readings for ordinances and resolutions tonight. Now we move to announcements and other business. And I would entertain a motion to accept the auditor's report for June 2015.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the auditor's report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same, uh, nay? Okay. And, um, under other, our other announcements, oh, yes.
We have a boil order in effect.
Oh.
So that is for a break that we just had. It's, uh, Nottingham, Monticello Village, and Hanning Lane.
Okay, thank you for the update. Yeah, it's important for citizens to know. Okay. At, at this time, I'd like to, um, just determine, confirm which committees will plan to meet next Monday night on our committee nights. Did I hear service safety and...
Transportation.
And transportation, planning...
Finance, personnel, and planning and development.
Okay.
Sounds like all four.
Along with a special session, we'll have a full, full house on this. Okay, all right.
Well, let's say finance and personnel is dependent upon any thing that's coming out of the auditor's office. I'll, I'll be checking with her to make sure.
Okay.
But right now, let's just tentatively say that the, I will, we will...
We might be looking at sewer rates?
Possibly.
Possibly, okay. Okay. All right, and, um, any other announcements or other business that we need to cover? Okay, we'll move on for opportunity for citizens, yes, oh, I'm sorry, council member Cochran.
Tomorrow, there will be a, a community conversations meeting hosted by, um, the Zero Waste Initiative in partnership with the Sustainability Commission at the Athens Public Library regarding single-use plastic bag waste and potential reduction projects. Um, this will be at one o'clock from one to two thirty at the Athens Public Library Meeting Room.
Tomorrow?
Right.
Okay, one to two thirty tomorrow. Thank you very much. Yes, that's my good.
Thank you. I have a quick question and/or announcement, and perhaps the, you all on council and/or the mayor can remind me. Am I correct in understanding that we are now single-stream? Is that correct? That, uh...
I have been told in an email today that they have begun it today. I had hoped for a little bit of a rollout and a little bit more education, but you can throw your recycling together.
It's interesting, because I just got a text about that. So you're, you're saying that...
That the Athens Hocking Recycling Center has stated as of today, they are, they will pick up single-stream.
Great. Is there any guidance regarding that, regarding paper, or...
Would have liked that, but I have not received that, so we'll be discussing this week and try to get some more PSAs and public service announcements and outreach on that. I also know that they were successful in their grant for, uh, funding for some glass, that that's primarily to do with the Uptown Tavern areas, that they would like to keep the glass separate there in order to achieve the goal of recycling the glass. More to come on both of those.[1697.12]